Okay, good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Board work session for Monday, October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. It's ten oh three A M. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and we have Commissioner Carolina Mejia and Gary Edwards on Zoom. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings, Assistant County Manager Rob Campbell, a whole crew of team from our Sheriff's Department and Risk Management and Central Services and Budget. So we all know each other though, so we will just, I'll just turn this straight to the County Manager. We have a, an item regarding Axon and the Sheriff's Office up first.
Thank you so much, Chair. Asked the team to put the presentation up. Getting set up. Want to thank the team for their research, putting it together, working in partnership with the sheriff. That's getting ready to go. Sheriff, we'll hand over to you. You'll walk us through the presentation. That'd be fantastic.
Yeah. Good morning. For, for context, this came up, obviously, right when I got elected. Well, I guess I should back up. Moving into the past, prior to becoming sheriff, the, I believe, the prior sheriff approached the Board of County Commissioners of getting body cameras for our deputies. A lot of the state and country have moved towards body cameras. At the time, it sounded like, kind of the context was like, go find your body camera system, bring it back to us. Let's get it implemented. Unfortunately, again, I wasn't in office, but we chose the lowest bidder and the lowest quality product on the market for the cheapest cost. And that has kind of left us in a tough spot. The first issue, and maybe the biggest issue that I have, is that the cameras are failing at times. They're failing to activate. They're failing to automatically come on. We've had a number of instances where deputies are going through critical incidences and their cameras have not activated when they should have. And when it comes to public scrutiny about these cameras, you're better off not having cameras on at all than having a camera on and having it not on. Or having a camera on your body and not having it activate. That's worse than just going into these incidences with no, with no camera at all. Similarly, we've also had issues with the GTAC system where every video has to be downloaded by every single entity. So prosecution has to download the video to edit it. Public defense has to download the video to edit it. We have to download the video to edit it. And similarly, that causes significant backup times for court. And once again, we find ourselves in a scenario where it would be better to not have the cameras at all than to have courts sit here with evidence that can't be accessed. You're just better off not having footage at all. So and at first I was like, oh, well, it can't be that bad. I also got the body camera dash camera system, found a number of times where my body camera wasn't activating when it should have. So I know my staff aren't making this up. It's happening to me as well on the roadway. It happened during my crash where I got T-bones. My camera should have activated. It didn't. After I realized it and looked down, I activated it, but it misses that, that timeframe. And the third piece that really concerns me is that it is pretty standard for body camera dash camera technology that the cameras are supposed to always be recording. And then when you push the button or activate it, it captures thirty seconds ahead of time with no audio. So that if someone comes up and slaps you, and then you activate your camera and hit them back, it shows what happened ahead of time. You know, you, you capture that full picture. The cameras that we have are too cheap. The batteries don't last. So in order to keep that function going, we were having deputies charge their cameras two to three times per ten hour shift. The problem with that is that deputies then leave them on the docking station. They leave them plugged in, charging, and then they, once again, run off into the call and realize that they've left their camera behind because it's charging. So with that, we started reaching out to, obviously, the other entities. Almost every other organization around us uses Axon. And none of those issues have been reported with Axon. They're kind of the leader in the, in the in the field, in the product field. And so, and they were able to have to maintain that thirty second pre-activation while maintaining the, the camera or the battery function. So with that being said, the, the other piece of this is that our prior way of going about body cameras, to me, is flawed. It's a technology piece, and technology gets outdated really, really quickly. And you end up having to move on and keep, and keep cycling things through. So as it currently sits, we go through an ERNR process where we physically purchase the property and own it. And then when it becomes obsolete, the idea is that we put enough money through the ERNR that we buy it all over again. With Axon, it's a little bit different. It is a lease-to-own type equipment. So you end up paying the premium, and it's set based on, you know, number of cameras, different packages. And then they keep sending you the newest stuff as part of your overall cost. So as of right now, we've got about seven hundred-ish, eight hundred-ish thousand dollars set aside for body cameras through ERNR. We have another four hundred thousand set aside for tasers, and both our, our tasers are also very old. So we're in the process right now where we can go buy new tasers. But it wouldn't make sense if we are looking at potentially switching and just doing a package deal. On top of that, Axon is willing to give us a discount because you guys have already agreed to go to Justice Premier for prosecution and defense. That's the new basically cloud-based service that they use to maintain all of the evidence. So there's a number of, of big benefits, but basically the three, the three package tier that we're looking at is to get the taser, the new taser, which we have money. We need new tasers. We have the money for that. And then the Axon Fleet Three, which is the dash camera, and the Axon Body Camera Four, which is the body camera system. And it's all interconnected. So we can go on probably to the next slide. Yeah, there we go. So the in-car, we, the quote that we've currently built for also incorporates all of the new deputy sheriffs. So the timing for us made sense. We don't want to go equip a bunch of our new cars, the twenty-seven new vehicles and deputies, and then make the switch after that because that's going to cost a lot of time and money. So this was for a hundred fleet cars, two cameras per car. That's one dash camera, one body camera. It's unlimited storage. It includes the installation. It's a change from using the AirCard inside of our laptops to a cradle point, which is basically where the car itself has the, has the internet, not the laptop, which is a far superior setup. And then the camera refresh at five years and the ten-year mark. It's a ten-year contract, I believe, is what Axon has proposed. So again, it includes that, that constant refresh of, hey, there's better technology. We're sending you the, the new stuff. Give us the old stuff back, kind of thing. And then you have the option, again, and I know we've had this conversation, all the new camera systems and technology have the option to add license plate reader technology, and they're all tied in with Flock. So it's all the same system. But that's an option. It's not something that's mandatory. And that's not what we have included in our bid. Next. So the body worn camera, it's a hundred body worn cameras. Fourteen eight bay docking stations that we can situate throughout the county for deputies to offload, unlimited storage, various mounts. The camera and docking station refreshes at two and a half, five, seven and a half, and ten years. And it also includes redaction assistance with evidence dot com. It also includes evidence dot com. So evidence dot com is where basically everyone is sending all of their digital evidence at this point. So it includes the video footage from these things. It also includes photos and other items that you can, you can store. Olympia Police Department uses this, and Lacey Police Department uses it as well. So there's also a piece here about consolidating the entire county, then, with the exception of Tumwater and Evergreen, and I think Tenino, would be with Axon, which makes it a lot easier for the prosecutor to take evidence from one source. Next slide. For the tasers, it includes a hundred tasers, the batteries, the docking stations, the warranties, annual training, the halt suit, and a taser refresh at the five-year mark. And like I said, our tasers are extremely old. We're a few generations back now. And so we've just been saving the money up through ERNR. In fact, ERNR has excess money because we've outlived how long we were supposed to replace them with the hope that we could switch to something that was more of a package deal. Slide. These are some of the videos. We'll probably just leave these videos with you for you to review on your own time. I don't think we need to watch all of those right now. But each of these goes through kind of each of the different pieces of the technology. And some of the advantages, obviously, the taser ten is, is much different than the tasers we're currently using. We believe that they're a lot more effective in incapacitating people for a less lethal arrest. And again, that, a lot of that has to do with the fact that the taser has ten shots as opposed to our current tasers have one. So right now, you have one chance with the taser to split the belt line and get lockup for people to fall down and handcuff them. The taser has ten, ten shots, and it needs two. So you basically have five chances.
One of those little holes underneath is a separate?
Yes.
Wow, that is.
Yeah. So you still need two to lock someone up with the taser ten. However, you, you get ten chances to, to hit them. As opposed to right now, the taser shoots out two shots and, you know, as long as you can get them somewhere on the body, the problem is people start wearing puffy jackets and stuff, and the tasers is, is worthless. So the taser ten gives you just more opportunity. So probably go to the next slide. The system allows, so it's unlimited storage. It's all, it's all cloud-based. So it allows, for instance, a deputy to record an incident. It go, the, they refer to the prosecutor. It goes up to the cloud. The prosecutor then gets to edit that copy on the cloud to present for court. Same thing for the defense. The defense gets to edit their own. Everyone gets their own copy up in the cloud. Of course, you can still download it. But the system is stable enough that you could even present from the cloud in court. And that's a big, that's a big thing for us. The current GTAC system, if you've ever used it, you cannot view a video without downloading it. It will sit in buffer all day long. And our policy at the Sheriff's Office is every time a deputy uses force, and every time they get into a vehicle pursuit, the sergeants and lieutenants have to review that footage. So every single time there's a car chase or someone uses force, we're downloading that whole video. Even if we only need to watch a small portion of it, there's no option to like, just download the part I need. We download the whole thing. We review it, and then we delete the, the, the video afterwards and approve the report, and then it's still saved up in the system, obviously. Equipment refreshes are part of the, are part of the quote. So it gets away from this idea that you buy one thing, and then you hope that lasts as long as you can, and then you buy it again in the future. It is more of a lease-to-own system where you continuously get the new equipment, and you just pay the rate and send the old stuff back. The other piece is that the Axon is part of a larger ecosystem. So unlike with our current body cameras, the Axon, because the taser is tied into it, if a deputy draws their taser with the Axon system, it automatically activates the body camera and the dash camera. That currently isn't possible because we're using two different brands that don't talk to each other with GTAC and Axon. And the taser is owned exclusively by, by Axon. It's also pretty, pretty common that in the future, any significant growth in technology through policing is going to come from Axon. They're buying drone companies. They're buying pretty much anything up that involves police work in the, in the, in the country. So virtual reality training drones, all those types of things are, are very likely going to be done through Axon. So the ten-year cost for cameras, tasers, and dash cameras is five point six million. That's five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars annually. The big thing of this, of course, is that everything sounds great, but what, what's going to, how are we going to pay for it? What's the cost going to come down to? And so Lonnie and I worked pretty closely with Axon to figure out how we can get the budget side of the, of this kind of under control. And again, this was going back to the concept of having two different funds, a public safety fund and a general fund. But our goal was, how do we basically keep the exact same general fund blueprint and then, you know, bill the new deputies to the public safety fund? And what we were able to do is, our calculation showed that we're, we were putting about a quarter million dollars a year into ERNR for the body camera replacement. So we were trying to figure out a way for our existing deputies and commission staff. How do we keep the budget side of that within that two hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollar replace? So if we're paying two hundred and fifty thousand a year in the general fund, how do we keep it there so we're not coming to the county commissioners asking for more general fund? And the way that we were able to do this was to essentially say, Axon, take all of the discounts, take all of the rates that you're going to give us, the best deal you can, and apply that to the general fund. And then for the public safety tax deputies, those twenty-seven additional cameras and whatnot, apply the full rate to. I'm sorry.
Please go ahead.
Apply the full rate to the public safety side. And so with that, they were able to basically say, okay, well, your existing costs and the fact that we have one point one million dollars sitting in the bank for replacement was put a down payment on the general fund side for this ten-year contract, apply the discounts to the general fund, and then bill out the rest of it as is, which put our blueprint right at about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for general fund, and the rest was billed through the public safety tax. And then the next slide. That is the end of, that is the end of the slide. So I'm happy to let this, anyone else who has any other input here before we take any questions. Lonnie, I know you worked with us pretty closely. And I think IT was on the same board that Axon is a better, is a better system to go with, especially if we can make the, the dollars make sense. So.
Sheriff, if we could, can, I think they, for the board's sake, just wanted to revisit the funding components. I know that, appreciate your support working with our team to make sure all the numbers added up. And I believe some of Robin's numbers did add up. Do you want to just go over those in, in detail real quick?
The detail would come from Bruce because they house the information for the ERNR reserve monies that have been collected over the years. But I did confirm that the budget is correct.
Thank you. Bruce, are you prepared to cover that?
I can just give a high level of, of one, about one point two is, is collected. One point two million is collected. And that is for both the taser replacement and the body cameras and in-vehicle cameras.
That's what we have currently collected?
That is project, that is including twenty twenty-five operating transfers as well. So that's, that's a little bit of a forecast to next year.
Gotcha. Thank you. So the remaining amount of funding would, as you said, Sheriff, would come from the public safety sales tax?
Yeah. So essentially, the theory here is that we're collecting, we're already collecting money. It's budgeted for body cameras through the general fund. The commissioners made that commitment. We've been paying the ERNR. The theory in the future is, instead of paying ERNR to replace, to buy cameras and then figure out, you know, oh, five years later, the cameras are going bad. We need to buy them again, is instead to just go through a contracted service, like most agencies in this country now are doing, and just pay Axon the fee. Of course, in the future, it's a ten-year contract, and the price goes up every year. But they lock you into that ten-year contract and say, here's your cost for the next ten years, kind of thing. And instead of paying ERNR fees, we would just pay this contracted price to then have the body cameras. They send you the new technology, and then in ten years, we renegotiate a, a new contract with them, obviously, at the new rate accounted for inflation and, and so on and so forth. So that's, it's a, it's, it's just basically a shift from ERNR to a contract.
Which that contract's paid by the same amount of ERNR that general fund's paying, plus whatever else is above that going inside of public safety sales tax?
Yeah.
And you've tried to figure out a way to make that make sense from your.
Granted, if the funds are all mixed together, then it's, it's all the same. But we were building this out with the idea that it was two funds and trying to make it make sense on that part. So yeah, that's, that's the goal. Is, is to figure out how we can make Axon work with our current budget as best as possible, knowing that, make no mistake, Axon is more expensive. There's, it's a, it's a bigger product. It's a better product. It's an industry leader. But my biggest concern, obviously, was that we kind of cheaped out on body cameras, and that's not really an area where I particularly want to cheap out.
I totally understand what you're saying, but just to kind of fill in the history, like, we had no money for body cameras, and we had a, we had a state grant. I think it was a million dollars that could be applied.
Yes.
And so we had to buy what we could afford to buy with the grant money we had. Otherwise, we weren't going to have anything. So, I mean, I it was probably not the greatest decision, but there were reasons why it was made, and now we're paying for that. Sometimes the cheaper item works out. Sometimes it doesn't. This time, it obviously didn't.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I'm hearing from all quarters that this is not meeting our needs, but.
And, and make no mistake, we do have cameras that are recording. So I think that is still, in the grand scheme of things, better than having nothing, right? I mean, I would rather be covered eighty percent of the time than none of the time. But I think that in today's day and age, it is just the expectation that we are going to record encounters, that the recorders are always going to be turned on within policy, that they're going to capture what people expect to be captured. That's my, that's my biggest concern right now is, is we run into so many issues. And, and I made the decision when we got, when I got elected, you know, hey, we can delay the body camera program. We made the decision to just push forward through the problems and try to figure it out. And it caused a lot of things that we've had to work through. But there's just some things that we can't work through. They're just problems that, that we're going to continue to have, especially on the back end, and how much work is being done on the back end to get these cameras ready for court.
I, I see Commissioner Mejia's hand, but I just had one more follow-up. The, just to kind of orient the conversation, we, I mean, I've been hearing about the Axon in, this whole, this whole issue and problem and the different dimensions of it, we've been discussing for years. I guess my question, looking at staff, is, you know, we, we've got the software, Justice, what'd you call it?
Justice Premier.
Justice Premier going to, to prosecutor and public defense. That's, does that, did that, I'm just forgetting detail. Is, did that have an independent value, or was that like part of this transition that we sort of made? Decision that we made to, to move this direction already, and that's why we put that software in place? Or was that, or was there an independent reason we, we upgraded that software irrespective of whether we were going to be doing, making this decision?
Will it, Lonnie, can you speak to that?
The only independence is that prosecuting, attorney, and public defense had a different business need for this tool.
Yeah.
They're accepting evidence from all the municipalities. They didn't have a, the GTAC environment was not a smooth environment to accept that digital evidence. And that's really where the Axon conversation started from the public defense and prosecution.
But I guess my point is, if, if all this new equipment didn't come, are they still making use of that? Just to Justice Premier, that still works better, even if we were stuck with, for whatever reason, GTAC?
Correct.
Okay. So it was, this is kind of a stepping stone. I'm just trying to figure out, like, what decisions we've really already made versus what decisions are left to be made by the board in, in this whole thing. Commissioner Mejia, go ahead.
Thank you. I have questions about the costs and the cost breakdown, right? So as we're talking about the two hundred and fifty thousand that we currently have allotted to go to, instead of being R and R, to go to the price of this, which is, is great. I'm wondering in terms of what's going to be the impact then to the public safety fund?
It look, Commissioner Mejia, we need to just take this back and make sure we're all on the same page on the numbers. But here's the different parts of the equation. We have a contribution of over two hundred and fifty from the general fund that we're already paying. Because we've already paid that amount, what Bruce mentioned in the one point six million plus number, that's the contribution that builds up into that account. So that then, as the sheriff mentioned, we would build that account up and then go and replace. The, the opportunity we have in this situation is that we wouldn't have to do that replacement. So if we were to take the one point six, it's like close to one point seven, and you were to break that out into ten-year overview, it, it adds to the two fifty contribution, the remaining amount. And we'll, we'll do the work on the finance side so we can come back and say, this is what will hit the, the public safety sales tax. At the same time, our team is preparing an overview of public safety sales tax account that we're going to work to review with the sheriff and his team, and then come and present that in a board work session in detail, all the different things that we're tracking. And we'll definitely put this in there and have the number for you. But, you know, roughly speaking, it's like a couple hundred extra thousand that will hit the, for the ten-year component that will hit the public safety sales tax. And that's a number kind of back of the napkin.
Okay. So I, I guess I look forward to, to seeing that information. And then I'm wondering, besides the kind of that yearly cost, are there any more ongoing costs that we should be aware of?
I think that's why we have, great question. We look at this from the general service component, which I think there's a a part that I'll have Bruce weigh in on, on the implementation of this, the IT component and the risk management component. Brian, you want to give your assessment of, from a risk standpoint?
Sure. I think if you put your risk hat on, or your liability hat, or safety hat on anything from what the sheriff said, you'll, you'll probably come to the conclusion that all of this is a risk reduction, a risk liability reduction, a safety for our deputies, our employees. The sheriff said being covered eighty percent of the time is better than nothing. But what worries us is that twenty percent of the time where that video needed to be recorded, and now we're in a liability or a tort lawsuit, and the plaintiff's side is going to jump on spoliation of evidence rather than the video is not working. With the, with the tasers, anytime you can reduce the likelihood of lethal force, definitely safer for our deputies. Definitely safer for our, our reduction in our liability. Our risk pool is backing the Axon ten for a variety of reasons. The, I think it's a larger, it's a forty-five feet where you can, forty-five feet versus probably the ten that you're used to. Like you said, you have ten shots. Just better accuracy, better reduction in that lethal force, lethal use of force. I think also the smart holster technology, which the Axon ten tasers have, once it's drawn, the video starts. So again, another reduction in that liability. Our risk pool has a targeted risk reduction grant each year. And for the Axon tasers, they're giving every county in our pool a two thousand dollar grant. So I know two thousand compared to the large, a number for those tasers is a lot.
Of the one hundred tasers?
Maybe. How much are they each?
Close to two thousand.
Yeah. I guess two thousand's better than nothing, but.
You're right. They're, I mean, having nine extra opportunities to not pull out your gun and then not, to not have to make contact with somebody, that's huge.
That is big. So it's a big reduction to the county's liability program overall. And, and the sheriff has already talked about, and Lonnie here has also talked about just the efficiency in downloading that video. Risk needs to grab the video as well whenever we have a tort, a lawsuit. So the efficiencies in the risk, or the efficiencies in the downloading of the videos, I have been a party to that as well. It is, is a great use of time that we could get back. But, you know, putting a dollar on the use of time is not as easy, but it is a big impact.
Lonnie, with your perspective, from an IT standpoint, are there any other costs that you see? Or?
No. This is actually, it'll reduce and make it easier from a support and response.
Okay. Can you just explain to folks that may not know?
Yeah. So going from two systems, right? So we'd have GTAC and Axon. If we, if we didn't go for the sheriff's office, we would have GTAC for the body cams. And then on the evidence side, when they sent it to the prosecutor, it would go through to the Axon side. So we're, we would have to have and manage both of those systems simultaneously throughout the life of all of our equipment. With going to Axon for the body cameras for the sheriff's office, it just puts the entire county into a single ecosystem for gathering and accepting evidence.
So this creates efficiency, so you don't anticipate staff time would increase?
Yeah. It shouldn't, should not. Yeah, it shouldn't should not inc- I mean, we've not had the best luck with the current system. And I'm confident that this system, the Axon's not going to have those same challenges.
Thank you for your work, Lonnie. Bruce, you want to talk a little bit about implementation, especially for the vehicles and what are your thoughts about that?
So Central Services is working closely with I T on on programming the installs. We're we still need some additional information from the vendor as far as the level of effort and timeline. And the degree to which the vendor will be taking on the installation piece.
What's uh what's your e- like projected installation on the vehicle component? How many months would you conservatively say would take to implement all the material, all the units with new equipment?
I I would really need some additional information from the vendor as far as.
You're working on that now? But it's not something that would happen in a few days, correct?
No, it'd be a significant level of effort associated with it.
I just wanted to add one more piece, and I know it's not part of this conversation, but we're in the process or I T's in the process of changing all of our mobile computers in our cars. That's come up for a re-change over. And with this Axon system, they would use a Wi-Fi cradle point similar to what the medic units use and the fireside uses. That is way better than the the cellular system that's in our laptops right now. It is very slow and hit and miss with all the data that we're trying to send through it. So uh they're kind of hand in hand. If if we switch to this newer system, the newer M C Ts that we're using won't require the cell phone service to each computer. It'll work on that Wi-Fi system that will be part of this Axon cradle point thing. So those are going to kind of mend together depending on how this this stuff goes. We'll either buy more computers with cellular service for each car or kind of transform into that that new new system with the Wi-Fi. Which will upload and download way more data that we need to do.
And I would just add, there's a timing component to commissioners just purchased twenty seven cars. So to me, it would be really silly, twenty seven ish, right? It'd be really silly to go outfit all of these cars with the old stuff because we get billed for it all. And then come back and say, actually, just kidding, shops, go ahead and rip everything out, install all the new stuff in all these cars. And so obviously, if we have to, we got to keep the the ball rolling and get people hired on and get cars outfitted. But there's a timing component of this made sense. If we're going to make the jump, it should be now, it shouldn't be in one year, it shouldn't be in three or four years when we're trying to figure all this stuff out. It 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 should be something that we look into the future and say, all right, we have a big bump of cars coming in. And the other thing I would touch on for the uh extra work, I actually anticipate that with our current system and our support staff having to go through and and manually redact everything. This includes a little bit better redaction technology. So where we're adding a bunch of workload through more deputies. I suspect in our current system, we'd probably be coming back in a couple of years, asking for more support staff to help with redactions. Whereas this actually may have the potential to say, actually, the current staff, the assistance of the technology that's included in this package may not need an increase in F T Es. Because the work becomes more efficient, easier to do, faster to go through videos.
Commissioner Mihia?
Thank you. And then my last question is in regards to timeline, like what's the timeline for for this?
Uh, well, my timeline would be again soon, right? I we have cars that are going to be in the process of getting outfitted. So my perspective is it's not the end of the world, we can wait. But every car that we outfit with old technology or ours built and work done by our county shops that then has to get undone in the future. So yeah, I guess the request would be if if the money makes sense, then it makes sense to do it now. If the money doesn't make sense, then of course we would have to have that conversation.
So next step would be bringing a agenda item forward for the board to agree to the contract. Commissioners, we believe that we can have the finance component wrapped up probably by next week. And so that then it can advance on the next available agenda for more consideration.
Commissioner Klaus?
I had a couple of questions. I just kind of wrote them down throughout the presentation, so. I was wondering, the current total number of G-Tech, like pieces of equipment, do we have that? Like, do you know off the top of your head, or does anyone here have that information? Like, how many G-Tech body cams do we have, for example, or dash cams?
Exact? No, I can tell you that we have enough for every deputy and some spares. So we've probably got ten to fifteen, unless you've got the numbers.
E R N R has a collection for a hundred body cameras and eighty in car.
Okay, uh, collection as in we currently own those?
And that, yes, we own them and that there's a program for future replacement.
Okay.
Yeah, the word collection is referring to, based on the number of units, they they collect. Dollars from the sheriff to then re- uh replenish uh and maintain the existing.
Okay, uh, let's see. Okay, so as far as the timeline, Commissioner Mihia asked about the timeline, but I didn't quite hear in your answer. You said timing ASAP because we have these twenty seven new cars. But when do we receive that, like, when do those cars need to have uh some sort of installation, whether it's the current system or the new one?
I'll defer to Bruce, but we've got eight cars that are sitting at the county shop right now, getting ready to that are ready to be worked on and then in order of.
Yeah, the the next step is for us to bring the contract forward for board approval um in an A I S. Once the board takes action. The board were to approve that, then the installation process. Bruce has currently gained information from the installer to figure out how long would it take? Because there's a portion where the um the company is going to work to train and then bring some of that installation. And then Bruce's team picks up from there. I would estimate that installation will take several months to completely outfit the entire fleet, multiple months. And so we're just being cautious that we don't agree to a timeframe until Bruce knows the specs and the details. He has to get that from the vendor, but then they'll they'll start working on it proactively and prospectively moving forward.
So my question is more so like, um, let's say we decided we're not going to do the Axon thing, just that's off the table, just. As you know, kind of an example, so we have twenty seven new cars coming in and we need to outfit them with the current equipment. What would that timeline look like? Would they just be immediately installed or?
There would be some lead time associated with procuring the equipment. But then once the equipment's on hand, the time to install the cameras is incorporated into the outfit, the in-service.
And I don't think we have. I don't think we have a price for that, but those would have to be purchased systems. We are, we've already maxed out all the ones that we've keep reusing in cars. So I think those would be additional purchases for that G-Tech system.
Through the public safety tax for the new, built into the new position.
Okay, I guess I don't know if I'm, I I don't feel like my question is quite being answered. I'm basically wondering if like we were to, like, would the. Installation, let's say we do go with Axon, would that delay the installation like?
Well, I think what, maybe if I tell me if I'm don't understand your question. So if we have twenty seven units right now, we're maxed out on the old system, are looking to switch gears from the old to the new. So if the board were to approve the contract with Axon, then they would purchase the new units and install those in the in the twenty seven units. And that would be um like the the first transition to then completely go back and update the entire fleet. And that's what we're working on with Bruce to get a timeframe for all of that. If the board were to say in in your um uh comments or kind of for the sake of the argument there. No, we're not going to do Axon, then they would have to go and buy the old system, new units for the old system and still install them.
Okay.
And put them in place. And I think based on what you're hearing is functionality and adaptability is just less with the old system.
Okay, um, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah. I had one more question. Okay, so within your presentation, there are a number of like pieces of equipment, including the taser, the fleet camera and the body cam. And then as you were presenting, I heard a couple of things that are like absolute needs. We've we've known for a long time, um, that you really need something that allows you to have like reliable activation. And also reliable power capacity. Regarding the activation, just real quick, if they don't kick on automatically, do you do your deputies have the ability to manually activate those?
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that wasn't a problem. And then, um, like the taser, for example, like if we were to kind of take each piece of equipment out of here and look at them independently. The body cam and the fleet cam, that makes sense to me, like to meet those needs that you mentioned. The taser I have questions about um and the A P L R, that's optional, I have questions about that too. When this comes back before the board, will it include, like, can we look at different rates? Like, let's say we don't include the taser or um we don't include A P L R and we or we do, can we look at all of those price points?
Don't you believe A P L R is included in the current rate? He was just saying that's a functional.
It's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the camera system is capable of A L P R, but we would have to pay to unlock the software. At this point in time, there's more conversations to be had. Now, it ties, they work directly with Flock, it's the same same system, same same integrated system. But that's going to be a future conversation about whether or not that's something the county wants to go with. For the tasers, I would be hard pressed to think that that's an option to not buy the tasers. We, our deputies need tasers, we don't have a choice, it's it's mandatory by policy. State law requires in a lot of scenarios that less lethal force be used and all these different things. So if the board came back in a scenario and said, hey, we're going to approve dash and body, but not tasers, I would tell chief, go buy tasers right now. With and we would just buy to own, but that would be, you'd be buying to own one portion of Axon and renting the other. You wouldn't get the discounts for the bundling.
Okay.
Which is, well, the question I was going to ask you to the team, sounds like the proposal that Axon has given you is a bundle proposal.
It is.
So I don't believe we have the ability to just to pull one thing out because it sounds like they negotiated all three over a ten year period. And there's probably savings and discounts, kind of like when you bundle your home and auto insurance.
Yeah.
State farm.
It's greenwash too. Bundle is good.
Spend more. Well, in this case, it sounds like that's the that's the bid we got, so we don't have a bid that uh that, does it pull out each cost? I'm not.
There, I mean, there's like ninety two line items.
Okay.
These tasers are light years beyond what's currently used and the ones we have are in dire need of replacement. The risk risk management is saying these are much safer. They provide, you know, nine additional options before a deputy has to pull their gun out and point it at somebody. And nine additional options before they have to go hands on with somebody. So these are, I mean, these will, these could save lives. I've seen many scenarios where somebody ends up getting shot when this could potentially have not led to that.
Sure.
Why, didn't you say that, I mean, isn't the point that there's like a camera feature to these tasers? Like current tasers, do they also have features?
Turn very well.
Cord on. Our old, our old tasers? No, those are, we, so the reason there's four hundred thousand dollars sitting in the taser fund is because we're quite a few years beyond.
Two generations.
Yeah, we're two generations behind. So over the last, I don't know, decade ish roughly, a little less than a decade, when we could have replaced our tasers with the money, we didn't. We continued to use the tasers and built the fund up. Because with E R and R, if you don't ever buy anything, the money just keeps piling up in the account. So that's what we've done. Really, if we were replacing the tasers normally, we would have less money in that account. Thankfully, right now, we're sitting in a better spot because we've just continued to save and use our tasers. But you know, the taser I carry on patrol is real old. It's got a bunch of warning signs on it, like your battery's not that great.
And that's it, and then you've got to take the end off of it and you got to touch the guy or gal or horse or whatever you're tasing and and physically tase them.
And the max effective distance is really ten fifteen feet. Beyond that, you're getting lucky um with the taser, it's about, but the new taser is about forty five feet. Where you can shoot directly at people.
I think the other benefit too to getting as part of the the bundle is that if they come out with a new one, which this one we're looking at is the newest one. That they'll automatically incorporate that in your next contract, in your next bundle. The way we sit at it now, we buy a whole bunch, we pay a couple hundred thousand dollars, buy a whole bunch. And now they get to where, hey, we don't maintain those.
And you're never behind the curve using antiquated equipment again.
You continue to get the new stuff versus buying it straight outright, which what we have now, we've done that over the last, I think, three series of tasers. We had some really old ones and we went to the twenty sixes, now we have the twenty six Ps, but they don't uh maintain them anymore. So they they'll still sell them if you want them, but they're not going to exchange them or do anything like that if they're damaged. You're just buying another one for eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars a pop, so.
I'm just making sure we're being responsive to Commissioner Klaus's question about why we we don't have them separated out at this point.
Yeah, no, I get it.
But to be clear, A L P R is not part of this this contract proposal.
Go ahead, back to you. Sorry, I interrupted you.
I don't, I think that that answered my questions. The A L P R, if I heard you correctly, I just want to make sure. So I I saw in the uh PowerPoint, it's not included in the current proposal. When this request comes before us for final approval, will that, is that something you're interested in including in that? Or are you saying, well, we're looking at that maybe down the road, like because it has Flock?
Down the road.
Okay.
I I would love to have this technology, if you guys want to throw some more money at it, I would be happy to have it. I mean, it's it's huge. I mean, we're we're getting hit, we're liquid letting us know they're solving homicide with Flock and and Axon. And really, all that the help, the body, the dash camera, A L P R is just Flock on wheels, that's all it's doing. As you're driving around, it's running the plates and sending hits to your car. No different than Flock does when cars run through. But I felt like that was a larger conversation to have and I didn't want to get caught up on a license plate reader conversation. When we desperately need a camera system that works and just activates when we expect it to. That's that's really the bulk of my concern right now. In the future, if there's capacity in the public safety tax or we get another grant fund that says, hey, we'll pay for five years of this stuff, we'll come back, we'll have the conversation. But right now, it's really just about getting the basic needs taken care of.
And and commissioners, we will round up on the exact costing of this. And Commissioner Mihia's question about how we're going to, we'll have all that in those one sheet that goes over. And we'll also, in that, when we bring that back, explain the E R and R rates and just how that that flows for maybe new commissioner.
Could you just include in that um in that information, like it's, you know, it's never like one thing or nothing, it's always like one thing versus another thing. So I mean, you kind of got into it, but like to see in black and white, what would it cost us to be continue to pay into G-Tech for the new cars? And you know, like, what are we actually saving? I mean, or what would we be saving, if anything, by, you know, staying with the status quo? Because you'd be paying into like you, the same amount from from thing, but then there'd be a different amount from the public safety sales tax presumably. Did you save what that number was, just the difference?
I don't, I don't think this is a savings proposition, this is a, the only savings that I could perceive, I'm sorry, maybe.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I don't think, I'm not saying there's a savings, but like the different, like. Probably costs a little more, but.
You still have to buy cameras no matter what.
Right, like, we're still going to pay, like.
Oh, to outfit the twenty seven.
Yeah, maybe it's a ten percent increase or something to get this like, you know, hundred percent increase in functionality or I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing those numbers out there.
I think I understand what you're asking.
Yeah, just like what would be, to the extent we're paying more, how much more? Because it's not zero, it's not just coming, it's just, it's not, it's not some new piece of technology that the option is not to have it. It's to have the older one that still costs a lot of money and they've they've maxed out the, they'd still need to purchase other systems for the new cars. And so I mean.
I got that.
It could be a fairly small ask really, even even looking at public safety tax alone. That'd just be a useful data point.
Full projections.
Uh, Commissioner Mihia?
Thank you. One last question is, what's going to happen with the G-Tech cameras? And is there a possibility that we can sell those maybe too?
I'm on it.
We do own them, so yeah, my, to my knowledge, we can surplus them, we can sell them. I, they're not, they're not owned by G-Tech, they're owned by us. Um, and we are not the only, we're not the only ones looking, I mean, there are smaller counties with less money, don't have a public safety tax kind of thing that are looking to add cameras. So there's also a a potential revenue uh to gain there. But I would, I would, I would defer that to um the E R and R champion in Central Services.
Right, we do have a process that we have to follow to dispose of property that the county owns, so we would be doing that.
But it is worth something.
My recommendation, right, with especially with camera technology and how fast it's, it would be to sell it as quickly as possible. Especially if we're already investing in another group and and try to get at least a little bit of revenue back from what we invested in the first place.
And especially for a smaller agency where there's maybe not as much volume, it could make sense, right? If you're downloading maybe one or two videos a day, might be a good sale to sell it to a smaller. For us, where we're downloading dozens, if not almost a hundred probably a day between all. For us, where we're downloading dozens, if not almost a hundred probably a day between all the different functions that we're doing, it's just, it's a, it's a lot for for an agency our size.
Okay, any other questions this morning on this topic? Commissioner Edwards?
No, I really don't have questions. I think my seatmates have done a good job uh, asking questions. I do want to compliment the sheriff and the staff involved because I think this was a very thorough and necessary conversation. So thank you.
Lonnie gets the credit.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
All right, that was the specific topic, any commissioner items for this morning's work session. We are back at two P M for commissioner check in. Lonnie?
Did you adjourn the meeting? I'm sorry.
No, I not yet. I asked if there were any commissioner items.
I have none.
But I don't think there were any. We'll cover them at two P M, uh, if there are, so.
Sorry.